Well, it's six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. If our PD chaplain can come lead us in prayer. There he is. Looking the wrong way.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for the privilege of being here tonight. It's an honor. Ladies and gentlemen, would you join me for a word of prayer this evening? Heavenly Father, I want to first thank you for the men and women that you've placed in leadership and oversight over this city for such a time as this. We thank you for their sacrifice. We thank you for their service. Lord, all of us in this room know that two qualities that make a great leader is wisdom and strength. So, God, tonight, we continue to pray that you give each and every one of them wisdom to make decisions that are right and righteous for the betterment of this great community, and that, Lord, you would accompany those decisions with the strength and fortitude to see them through. Lord, I'm reminded of the scripture in the book of Proverbs, chapter 29 and verse 2, that says, "When just and righteous people are in power, the citizens rejoice; but when evil people gain control, their rejoicing becomes groaning." Finally, Father, I want to pray for their families during this Christmas season. I pray abundant blessings upon each and every one of their households as we celebrate the coming of your Son, and it's in his name we pray tonight. Amen.
Amen. And we've got the Cub Scout Pack 211 from Coal Mountain is going to come up and lead us in the pledge to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, next is to consider the agenda for adoption. Do I have a motion?
Somebody say.
Please vote. Motion carries four oh. Item five, considering for adoption, the following meeting minutes. Item A, the regular meeting of November 15th, 2022.
Motion approved.
Please vote. Carries four oh. Item B, executive session meeting, September 15th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
Somebody say.
Please vote. Carries four oh. Item six, there is none. Item seven, there is none. Item eight, new business, planning and zoning. Item one, alcohol license application for Homestead Restaurant Group at 420 Vision Drive, Suite 101.
Good evening. As the mayor just said, we received a alcohol license application for the Homestead Restaurant Group, which will be located in the new city center. The application is for a consumption on the premise for distilled spirits, small beverage and wine. The applicant, Mr. Smith, he's here in attendance tonight. He's met all the requirements, paid all the fees, had a background check done, and there's nothing, nothing present that would prevent him from getting a license. So, my recommendation that we would approve the license.
Any questions or discussion? No motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Please vote. Carries four oh. Item two, 2023 alcohol license renewals.
Again, I'm guessing that all of you should have the documentation before you. The city has received a list of 56 current businesses that hold active alcohol licenses with the city that have completed the 2023 renewal process, and there was an attachment to it. Again, all of the businesses completed all the renewal application, submitted all the payment for all fees, and met all the requirements. Additionally, two of the new businesses listed on the list were recently approved last month for two of the businesses that'll be going in the city center. So, they're included on that list. Two current licenses that we have in the city that have held licenses for several years, El Rio Mexican Restaurant and Happy Family across the street, they have not completed the renewal process. It's my understanding and talking to the current owners that both businesses are in the process or have recently been sold. We've reached out. They have, were supposed to pass along to the new ownership, but as of this date, nobody has come forward to do a transfer application or a new alcohol license. We've also sent letters via U.S. mail and have not received any response back to them. So, if we receive no payment and late fees from them before the end of the year, those two licenses will be terminated effective January 1, and they will have to go through the whole process as a new license would, effective January 1.
Any questions or discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Please vote.
Thank you, Lenny.
Motion carries five oh. Thank you, Lenny. Item B, the annual awards from the police department.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I appreciate you all letting us have an opportunity once a year for me to brag on some of our staff. They're all doing a really, really good job. They work very hard for this city. They're great servants to this community, and it's disappointing I only get to talk about all of them individually, but I would just like to give out our yearly awards and maybe call attention to some of the extraordinary service that these officers do and have done throughout the year. The first one is Sergeant Tony Hodgkins. If you want to stand up. He's not actually getting an award, but he's gotten several commendations this year that I think are appropriate to highlight because he's such a hard-working, selfless police officer and supervisor. The first was an incident earlier in the summertime. We had severe storms move through the area, which caused heavy rains and flash flooding. During that time, Tony, while he was working, dressed just like that, waded into a creek because there was a house that was flooding because the creek had been backed up. So, he jumped in there, in the creek, waded to the water into the culvert, and he went ahead and moved out all of the debris from the culvert that was blocking the drainage of the water. So, John, he may be asking for one of your jobs later, you know? And he did an awesome job, and he rightfully recognized that if the water continued to rise, it was going to continue to move into this person's house. And certainly not the description of a police officer by most standards, but service to his city is something that he takes very strongly. Another incident we had just two weeks ago, we had a woman and an ex-husband who were involved in a custody dispute, and the ex-husband took their son out of the state against the paperwork that they had provided. He was actually supposed to be with his mom, and so he effectively kidnapped his son. They fled down to Florida. They moved over towards Alabama, and Tony did an unbelievable job of tracking that person through his cell phone, writing extensive warrants, calling jurisdictions where this person had been and visited, tracked down leads, and they were eventually able to track this guy down in Greenville, Alabama, of all places. So, it wasn't Auburn, thankfully. And so, we were able to recover the son safely, and that man is in jail. He attempted to escape from jail. Didn't go well for him. So, he's still in Greenville. He's not up here now, but Sergeant Hodgkins just does a phenomenal job for really everybody here, and whenever he sees a need, he's happy to reach it. So, Tony, I appreciate all the work that you do. So, for the first real award that we're going to give out, it's going to be our Officer of the Year. I had several nominations, and I just want to touch on the nominations because I felt like it really is important, even though they're not going to get the award this year, that they were nominated and recommended for. Really such an honor. The first is Officer Fitzpatrick. This is written by his supervisor, Sergeant Hodgkins. Officer Fitzpatrick continues steps up to the plate whenever he is needed. He's often the first to cover necessary shifts and looks out for other officers. He's quick to donate, to request the need for officers, deputies, and truly has a heart for service. Officer Fitzpatrick has continued to grow as an officer, both his day-to-day duties and his abilities as an instructor. He is quick to help the sheriff's office and the city when they're busy and never thinks twice to pick up a report. He's received life-saving awards in the past and regularly helps in medical emergencies. He continues to grow in his abilities to supervise and stand in for supervisors and train new police officers. So, Officer Fitzpatrick was one of our nominees. Another one from Sergeant Holbrook, did she make it in tonight? She did. Officer Bagwell works on her shift, and she recommended him for this yearly award. She says he's an officer who completes his job to the best of his ability on a daily basis. As a supervisor, she can depend on him to make good choices and follow through appropriately in all of his cases. He has a good attitude, and his behavior is a joy to work with, and he's a phenomenal fill-in supervisor for whenever she's not available. And the very last nominee that we had was Officer Coy Turner. He was recommended by his supervisor, Sergeant Gervin, who couldn't be with us tonight because he's not feeling well. Officer Turner is a huge asset to our department and deserving of this award and recognition. He comes into work every day with a positive attitude and often can be found helping other officers on shift. He has over 25 years of law enforcement experience and is one of the department's field training officers. I witnessed Officer Turner training young officers and helping them to ensure they are ready for their assignments before they pass the training program. Officer Turner has made numerous arrests this year when it was needed, but one of the biggest assets is the way he engages with his community. I will list a couple of reasons that I witnessed Officer Turner engaging with his community, but I know that there are many more. In October of this year, Officer Turner took his patrol vehicle to the Coming Strength and Fitness Gym during their trunk retreat event and handed out candy to all the children going around in their costumes. He did this off-the-clock and on his own personal time. Earlier this year, he received a call from Forsyth County Parks and Recreation Football Team that had made it to the championship game that was going to be played in Forsyth Central High School. The person calling asked if they could have an officer escort, a school bus, that there were children riding to the game in for a short distance. They wanted to do this to surprise the kids and offer to pay the officer for the service. I informed Officer Turner of this, and he volunteered to do it on his off day, and he turned down any money that they offered. He took a picture with the team and talked to all the players. Afterwards, Sergeant Gervin received multiple phone calls about how great Officer Turner was. Officer Turner takes a lot of passion being a police officer. He decided this year that he wanted to be a little bit more fit for duty. He has joined a gym, and to date, he's lost 33 pounds, which is a phenomenal task. While Officer Turner has been doing this, he's motivated other officers to get more fit for duty as well. The city of Coming is lucky to have Officer Turner. He's changed his whole life this year, but he's also changed many lives in the city of Coming. So, those are our nominees. And then, finally, we have the actual award for Officer of the Year. This comes from Sergeant Strano. I would like to recommend Officer Tyler Burns for Officer of the Year. Tyler, stand up.
All right.
Can you come stand up here with me? Officer Burns during this past year has investigated several felony cases and misdemeanors. He is always very professional, never hesitates to handle any calls for service. One case that stands out is a felony shoplifting from a Home Depot earlier this year. The call came in as a male stealing a electrical wire. The male later was identified. He fled the store, got into his vehicle. Officer Burns was in the parking lot and was receiving updates as the call was progressing. He was able to get behind the vehicle as it exited the Home Depot. As he initiated a traffic stop, the vehicle failed to yield, entered 400 northbound, crashed, and then the driver ran away on foot. Parent was set up, and he was surely taken into custody. After the arrest, Officer Burns sealed the vehicle and applied for a search warrant. The search of the vehicle located more wire taken from Home Depot. A Smith and Wesson pistol was found in the engine compartment where it'd been hidden, which is a really heads-up search there. Officer Burns comes to work every day willing to help his shift and to help the citizens of Coming. He continues to represent the agency with dignity and professionalism, and I can rely on Officer Burns at any moment. I know any call for service he goes to will be handled professionally and will be investigated thoroughly, and he's going to receive our Officer of the Year award. I've got another award to give out this evening. It's a life-saving medal. On May 29th of this year, units responded to a medical emergency call of a young female down in the rear parking lot of Big D's Barbecue. It wasn't the barbecue, I promise. It was reported that she was not breathing, and she had turned blue. One of the patrons had CPR training, was actively giving chest compressions whenever police units arrived. Sergeant Strano arrived on scene in a calm and professional manner. He administered his dose of Narcan, which is what helps alleviate the overdose effect for certain drugs and narcotics. While he was there, he continued to help with CPR. He detected a pulse and found that her breathing had been restored. The female patient had apparently overdosed on fentanyl products. She was weak and disoriented. He remained with her on the rough ground until EMS arrived, constantly reassuring her and helping her. He assisted her up and into the ambulance where she was taken to the hospital, and she ultimately survived that incident. For this display of professionalism, experience, and remaining calm during a stressful situation, now that we would like to formally give Sergeant Strano the life-saving medal award. During that time, we also have had an opening at our captain position, and Sergeant Strano, for all of the work that he does around our agency and for all of our people, has been awarded the Supervisor of the Year award and is going to be promoted to the captain level. Life-saving award there. You're going to have too much hardware to walk up there with. And then, we'll just leave it there for now. And just by way of closing, I appreciate all the work that all these officers do daily. Maybe you should leave that there. We have a ton of people that come to work every day, and they work when it's hot, when it's cold, when it's rainy, when things are slow, when they're busy. They just do a great job serving the city and this community. I hope that our service reflects what we believe the core values of this city and this agency are, and that we should be a servant to our community, and we should make this place better every single day. So, I appreciate all the support that we get from the city council and from all the members of our community. Thank you.
So, being the mayor, I get to be the complaint department a lot of times, and so I have to call our PD, and every single time, not one time have I ever had an issue. They're always right there, Johnny on the spot, and do such an incredible job, each and every one of you. And I've interacted with each and every one of you, and I couldn't ask for a better PD serving our city. Thank you very much. So, moving on, utilities, RFP results for F-250 service truck. Can you add waiters in there for Hodgkins? He may need waiters.
He'd probably like to have some. Well, my stuff's not as exciting as the chief's stuff, but... So, we've had trouble finding trucks, as y'all can imagine, and so we have a state contract bid for a Ford from Wade Ford in the amount of $53,578 for an F-250 or a Chevy 2500. That's the class of truck we were looking for. We have a bid from John Meagol Chevrolet in the amount of $55,892. The one at John Meagol Chevrolet is on the lot, the Ford we'd have to actually order. So, we put it out for bids a couple of times and didn't get any bids, believe it or not. It's just the weirdest time. We actually talked to the Ford folks, and they said if we wanted a 1500, which we've been looking for that, too, we would have to wait till 2024. And that's odd. So, anyway, the request that we have from the council is, can we buy the Chevrolet 2500 four-by-four truck? It was budgeted for 2022. It's about $2,300 more than the Ford, but the Ford we'd have to order, and we don't know when it would get here. The Chevrolet is actually on the lot at $55,892. Does that make sense? I think I've talked in circles.
Is the Chevrolet a gas engine like the Ford?
It is. They're both comparable.
Any questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
Chad, Chair Department.
I was about to say, are they okay driving the Chevy?
Are they okay?
It's going to be tough on them, I know.
I think they're...
I'll make a motion to go with the Chevy 2500 from John Meagol.
Please vote. Motion carries five oh. Thank you, John. So, next, item D, we have lost negotiations with the county. This has been going on for quite a while. The current offer, proposal from the county is not acceptable to the city. What the city's asking for is actually a six-and-a-half million dollar reduction from what our current sales tax split is. So, it's up to the council if you want to send this offer before you over to them. My recommendation's to strike item three from that offer.
The bulk sewage?
Yep.
I wondered how he was going to do that.
That was not supposed to have been in the offer.
Well, I have something to say. I understand why we would give them back the impact fees on our, the impact fees that we collect, because we do not have libraries, and we do not have a fire department. So, I can see that. The annexation doesn't amount to a whole lot, but you're giving away Mary Alice Park. Now, Mary Alice Park is 110 acres of land, which could have city parks on it, because we do not have one park in the city of Coming. We could build city parks there, and if we did not charge, the county charges for every park that they have. They rent them to the traveling teams or whatever you want to call it, and then they, in turn, give the price back to the parents. So, it costs you about $550 to play any sport in Forsyth County. So, we could put parks in when we have the money down the line, and if we did not charge, we would owe the Corps of Engineers nothing, but we would have the land which we could put those parts on, and we would have the infrastructure to count as ours. We currently, without this Mary Alice Park, have nowhere at all to put a park, and we have no parks. And it's just sad that we're sitting here as a city, and the only park we ever had, we put an administration building on it, backwards. I just don't understand why we would consider giving away Mary Alice Park. I would not, I would not bend to the county like that. I don't know what they want to do with it. I imagine they're going to put parks on it and lease them and then give whatever they, you know, you said they have to give a certain percent to the, back to the Corps of Engineers, but if you don't charge, you wouldn't have to. That's all I have to say.
Any other discussion?
I think just Chief's presentation hit home. It's just incumbent on us to get a deal struck and to have another prosperous 10 years. So, I just want everybody to be mindful of, there's some value, I think, in striking a deal with the county cordially. It's our only option. There's no court case. There's no third-party arbitration. We strike a deal or we don't. And it's important. It's important to our citizens, important to the county citizens, it's important to our services in our city, so...
They get 87 percent. We get 13. You think they're going to let that deal go? No. Matter's not what we get.
I agree with Christopher. I think a deal is, an agreement isn't very important, but I do think the agreement that we're offering, staying at the 13 percent, is a fair proposal on the city's behalf, especially in light of the sales tax that's generated in our city and the services and service delivery that we have in the city. And to the point of Mary Alice Park, you know, our attorney can speak, speak to the least possibly, how that works out, but I'm to the understanding that there is no way for the city to financially benefit from anything that's done in Mary Alice Park. And yes, park space is nice. However, from a financial standpoint, you have ongoing cost, maintenance, infrastructure, things of that nature that you would have to address in the future. We do not have city property taxes, nor will we, so you have to generate that revenue somehow. The county does, which we are part of, does have a lot of park space for residents to use. We're very fortunate in that regard. That's my only point to the Mary Alice contingent, and I do think that the county would probably do, they would handle it well, and there would be nice park space there that we all pay for anyways through our property taxes and...
Kevin or Phil, is there any information on the budget for Mary Alice revenues or lease and how that works?
Currently, we do collect roughly about $100,000 a year on admitted fees to the park. You pay a daily fee if you visit the park. It's either $5 or $7 per car. I can't remember off the top of my head, but we also pay, we get paid for anybody that wants to put their boat in, a small fee for that. The Corps allows us to collect that to offset the maintenance cost. Where the maintenance, where we may collect about $100,000 a year, we also expense that much annually on paying personnel to look after the park, paying to have the grounds taken care of, which is pretty expensive, and also trash removal. We also have to haul in sand every year to dredge the beach to make it to where, you know, people can really enjoy it. So, are we making money on Mary Alice Park? A short answer, no. We're, we're breaking even at best.
And there was a time where, obviously, several years ago, Great Wolf Lodge was a potential, and then we also had a guy from the Corps come and meet with this council, I believe, at a work session, and talk about some possibilities, and we had a plan drawn, but there's never been much momentum since the Wolf Lodge for anything different down there, huh?
No, and even when we were negotiating with Great Wolf, and this is many years ago, and it's long before I was in the position I'm in now, so I can only speak to a certain amount of knowledge on this, but to my knowledge at that time, we could only make back any money that we spent there. We couldn't make any income on that. Any income had to be, in turn, sent to the Corps of Engineers. They collected any income on the property. We could collect back our costs for construction, but that's, that's it. I mean, it would basically be...
You're offering a service to the people, correct?
It would be a service to the people, but it would be at a cost. As Jason was saying, it would be at a cost because the cost of providing park and rec compared to the revenue that you bring in, it's, it's pretty much a two-to-one expense-to-revenue ratio.
I have a question. Can you not renegotiate that lease? We'd never try.
I don't, that, that I would have to defer to legal counsel on that.
Have we tried?
We've not. The, I was involved when the, we were negotiating with Great Wolf, and we have not tried to ever renegotiate that lease. I do, I do not know the answer to whether or not it could be renegotiated. I am very familiar with how that all went. Believe it or not, I actually went to Washington and met with Senators Isaacs and Chambliss about it to get them to push the Corps to do this. And of course, then 2008 happened, and Great Wolf was no more. But I do remember very clearly on different trips we went on where we were talking to people about this, they were just adamant that this would not be something from which the city of Coming would ever, I don't want to say ever, would not derive any kind of an economic benefit.
Do you feel that the county will immediately renegotiate this lease?
I have no idea. And I don't know what the Corps would be willing to do either. And I don't know what the Corps would be willing to do either. That's the thing. I will speak to this just very briefly, though. I mean, we're talking about de-anexing. I tweaked the language a little bit, because if there's one thing I'm familiar with, it's that whole annexation/de annexation process representing local governments. The Corps has to ask us to de-annex, or the other ways to do it is for the General Assembly to do it, but I'm not aware that that's ever happened. But the Corps of Engineers has to request a de-annexation, and the Corps of Engineers had to request an annexation back when we did this. I think it was like in 2006 is when I worked on this, and if you ever want to look at it, the Corps of Engineers, of course, owns the shoreline of Lake Lanier, which is why we have a 50-foot-wide strip going up the shoreline. That's what the Corps annexed. They're going to have to request a de-annex that. And so, what we're saying here is that we will, in good faith, work with the county and the Corps to have the Corps do that. At the end of the day, it's up to the Corps whether or not to de-annex. And so, I was... You know, there were a couple of things in this original proposal that I was concerned about, the way it was worded, that we would be in a situation where we would be dictated to about what an agreement was going to be, so we changed a couple of things to say, we'll negotiate in good faith on this, we'll negotiate in good faith on that. This one, I specifically noted, it's within 60 days of the Corps of Engineers seeking de-annexation that we'll do that, because you have no power to de-annex until the Corps Engineers ask you to.
Because they own the property.
Because they own the property. It's the same as annexation. You don't get to go out and annex anything until the property owner comes to you. You don't get to de-annex anything until the property owner comes to you. It's the property owner's right. It's not yours.
Well, listen, I share a concern. I mean, park space is great, but I don't think by... If they agreed to de-annex, it would be anything other than park space, or under the county's budget would be greater park space than what we have now. And as far as the city not having, I mean, we have... I know you called it administration building, but they do a lot of programming. My children and wife go to some of the programs there at the administration building. It's a nice building. We have the Dobbs Creek Gym, and we've just... We're about to open up full force next year a 35-acre park that I expect thousands of people from the region to be using and utilizing. So, I disagree that this...
What 35-acre park?
On Highway 20 at the Coming City Center.
The city center? You're calling that a park?
Yeah. If you've not been over there, there's seven miles of walking trails and green space and places for people to gather.
Still not a ball field. We have no ball...
We don't have a ball field, but ball fields are expensive to...
And to that point, our population... Does our population dictate that we subsidize the county residents and other people that park space?
Because that's what's happening.
The county's going to do it, and we... I don't have the numbers, but the vast majority of the folks that go to any... Anything that the city has are non-city residents, which is great, but is that our obligation to subsidize that?
Well, I can tell you what the number is, because I've had staff run it. 98.6 percent of the people that use our park and recreation are not city residents, of which we lose about $1 million a year providing park and rec for basically county residents, which is fine, but we don't have... We have to fund that through local option sales tax, because we don't have a property tax.
The Aquatic Center is also...
Oh, yeah. Aquatic, thank you, Joey. That's another one, yeah.
And then outside of that, the other thing I just wanted to... I wanted to mention that I think we changed and just put it on record is this annexation, I think we changed that to do a pre-approval or a pre-application meeting with the county, and I think that is probably the way it should go, because I think it is more transparent and open to the applicant, to the county, and to the city, because many times annexation requests come in, and the city, none of us up here even know that it's coming through until it's done, and then it starts a process. So, I think that's the proper way to proceed with that, and I think it's just fair to everybody.
And then the last change, we're requesting a small right-of-way from the county-owned property for a road improvement, right?
Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion to send this to the county without item three.
I'll make a motion on their behalf to send this agreement to the county, striking item three.
Second? Please vote. Motion carries four to one. There are no announcements. Is there any need for executive session?
Yes, sir, there is not.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Please vote. Carries five oh. Thanks, everyone, for coming.